I have Thalisa Kumie to be followed by Ayesha Ogilvy.
Good evening. I just came to say thank you to the RGB and thank you to the Tenant Association. All of you know what's going on, you're not privy to anything that's been said tonight. I also want to thank the Goddard Law Project Larry Wood and Stephanie Storks. Nobody is privy to what's going on, you know exactly what's going on. I'm a firm believer that you reap what you sow. You will absolutely reap what you sow. Life is spiritual. So what you put out and what you do to others will absolutely come back to you tenfold. So you want to be very careful as we move on into 2019, 2020, 2025, because what you put out is going to come back to you. So I want to tip my hat to you, RGB. I want to tip my hat to the Goddard Law Project that has been fighting on behalf of the people. It is unconscionable, some of the things that I've seen in my own building through the years. One of the supers himself was privy to actually coming in people's apartments and planting certain things. And I actually said to him, "I'm leaving right now." I said, "You're gonna reap what you sow." And he was just removed out of our building after doing all this. So I tip my hat to you, thank you so much.
Thank you. I have Ayesha Ogilvy to be followed by Carl Peter Clapper.
Hello.
Hello.
So as you know, my name is Ayesha Ogilvy. I come here as a tenant, however, I am also the Chair of Housing and Human Services for Community Board 12 of Manhattan, which is Washington Heights and Inwood. I appreciate everyone's participation in this hearing and I hope that it is not for naught, all of the testimony that people have come to share with you. I hear these stories on a regular basis and increasingly in recent years. My inbox on Facebook fills up with messages. I get text messages and phone calls. I'm a volunteer as a community board member and I give my time freely and my time is being spent more and more every day because more and more people are being targeted. More and more people are dealing with, you know, some of these beautiful rent laws that we're having implemented now, situations that really should not be the case. It is changing the core essence of our city. I don't really recognize where I live anymore because of how much people have been displaced from our community. And the numbers bear it out and I'm sure that you guys are privy to what those reports say, but I'm gonna speak to some of what's specific to what's happening in our district. Rental overcrowding is 15%. What that number will not tell you is that in some cases as many as 19 people are living in an apartment that may be two bedrooms, that people are living with people who are not their nuclear family members because they can't afford the rent unless they actually violate the rules and rent to someone else. Sometimes people who are putting their family members in danger because they can't afford the rents but they have to rent out in order to have a place to live. We need a rent rollback. At the very minimum, we need a rent freeze.
Thank you.
To the right thing.
Thank you. I have Carl Peter Clapper to be followed by Jose Tavares, who will need the assistance of the translator, thank you.
Yes, I come here as a resident of Carolyn Court. Our building actually has a name. And I also come here as an economist. I have been a political economist from my youth. Studied Henry George's work when I was 10 years old. What I hear today are a bunch of economically false statements. We are in the Great Depression too. Neither party wants to acknowledge that fact because they'd have to admit that they didn't avoid it and that we're still in it. And people are homeless because that is the measure of whether you're in a Great Depression or not. Not whether you get some lousy job somewhere that pays a third of what you got before. The other area is this market rate. Well, there's no such thing as a market rate when you have a mortgage. The mortgage is increasing the bid on every single real estate contract. Five times, six times, 10 times, depending upon what sort of mortgage it is, how much above that down payment. The banks are forcing real estate prices into the stratosphere. It is insane to have apartments that go for $10 million. We have them in this city. No market would support that. Nobody could support that. And the way the markets work is on the basis of the median. It's not on the basis of how much somebody is earning. You know, you might have somebody earning $12 million or whatever. That is not the basis for any sort of housing price. The other thing that has to come to you here. Okay, no, just one more thing too, okay? Gap is not being followed. Generally accepted accounting principles require that you depreciate the value of a capital asset such as an apartment building.
Thank you.
So there should be a depreciation of rent of 2.5%, considering a 40-year depreciation.
Thank you.
You're welcome, bye.
Jose Tavares. He left. Thank you. I have Jenny Tabalas to be followed by Jeannie Dubnow. Jenny Tabalas? Thank you.
Sorry, I have a patro, so bear with me.
No worries.
Okay.
Could you just bring the mic down a little bit?
Sure. Okay. First of all, good evening to each one of you.
Good evening.
My name is Jenny Tabalas, I live in Hamilton Heights. I'm asking for no increase, no rollback, I'm sorry, and rent rollback. Because 3/4 of my paycheck goes to rent. My apartment should have been rent stabilized all this time, but it wasn't. And I moved in in February 2011. The landlord at that time was Vantage. He knew this apartment was rent stabilization and he still rented to me at the higher market price. They broke the law twice. I find out the previous tenant also was, they rented to the higher market price. Then the landlord, the landlord doesn't care or anything as long people pay the price, whatever he requests. My lease kept increasing every year $50 to $100, but in the fourth year, he increased it to $1,500. And he said, "That's what it is if I want to live there." My landlord right now is Yahura Metlock, which hopefully pronounced it, and the company is Y&amp;M Management. Because of this reason, I had to find out, that's how I found out my apartment was established, then I had to get to a lawyer. I have five years with a private lawyer trying to get this solved, insolution. Now, the increases, I don't think is fair because landlords have advantage increased for almost 25 years and certain, while we, now that we're asking for something from them, they're crying because we asking a little bit back from no increase and rollback and everything. And I think that it's not fair, like one of the landlords talk about it, that they talk about that they want to feed their family. They got, yes, they have one family, but they have a lot of tenants and a lot of building. We have one income coming in and we have family to feed. And it's not, I, please let me finish. And it's not fair because first of all, I'm a widow. My husband served 25 years in the service, 13 years in the NYPD, and now 11. And I, and because I'm a young widow, I cannot qualify for nothing and do not think that in the future I'll be getting, because they told me, "Hopefully, when you turn 16, maybe you get something," but it's not guaranteed. So I'm asking you, please, please, Antoni, because my child needs to go to college. Right now, I'm paying rent all these years and I still have a balance of $100,000 they claim that I own. And I haven't missed anything. So please, no increase and rent rollback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Jeannie Dubnow to be followed by Nestor Medina.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jeannie Dubnow and I'm with Riverside Edgecombe Neighborhood Association. I've been here every year, I think. And every year, I ask you, do you know about the provision that if a landlord is not making a profit, they always have the right for hardship increase? You all know that because it's part of your rules. So these landlords who get up here and they tell us they're not making a profit and then we all say, "Well, go for hardship interest, show your books, you crooks." That's what we used to say all the time, "Show us your books, you crooks." Now, you know very well that the landlords are making profits because it comes out from your own, own information. According to data published by the City Rent Guidelines Board last week, the landlords were making profits on rent stabilized tenants by $540 on average from each unit per month. That's your information! So you all know this! So why do you have to, is there any question that there should be no rent increases? How can they get here and they stand up and they cry? We know damn well, and you know damn well, that the landlords are making profits. We don't have to prove it to you. Now, in recent years, homelessness in New York City has reached the highest levels that it had since the Great Depression in the 1930s. You all know that, we read this in the newspaper every day, every single day. Now you have an awesome responsibility from the Rent Guidelines Board. If you refuse, if you insist on increasing rents, you personally will be causing more homelessness. And in fact, you have all the information about how the landlords are making more profits. Now landlords are now threatening us. They say the Bronx is burning, remember how the Bronx was burning? They're getting up here and they're threatening that they're not going to fix our apartments anymore because, oh, the poor things can't afford it. However, they're making profit. So please, please, 0% rent increase, nothing, so that, because they already are making money more than they can hand over fist.
Thank you. I just, so my next speaker is Nestor Medina. I just want to remind you, we have over 30 more speakers, so that's why I'm trying to keep us on the time. And after Mr. Medina, I have Andrew Shapiro.
Good evening, board members, good evening, neighbors. My name is Nestor Medina, I actually live in Hell's Kitchen, but I work as a tenant advocate organizer in the Bronx. I have prepared a statement. I proudly stand here with my brothers and sisters behind me and on behalf of tenants from across the city to echo and amplify their concerns, cries, anger, frustrations, as they call on you to do the right thing and vote at the very least on a rent freeze. As a tenant advocate, I see firsthand the daily troubles and struggles that tenants face. It's no exaggeration when studies show that people are paying 40%, 50% of their income and higher on rent. Let's appreciate and connect with that for a moment. When incomes can't keep up with the rate of rent increases, you create a recipe for the crisis we face today. And so people are put in a tough situation of having to choose between eating, paying for medication, or other vital necessities and paying their rents. The reality is that every dollar makes a difference when the rents are too damn high. It is a tragedy that in a country as vastly affluent as this one, we find greed and profits supersede the anguish and dignity of working-class people, the economically disadvantaged, and sick and disabled. It is a tragedy that we have to be here today begging for relief when it's self-evident by the numerous studies and powerful voices here tonight, that's you folks, and across the city, right? That tenants are suffering, right? This level of suffering should provoke those in position, that's you guys, to respond with compassion and wisdom on addressing that suffer with nothing less than relief. We appeal to your hearts, your minds, and souls to do the right thing, bringing relief to us by voting on a rent freeze instead of an increase. Thank you very much.
I have Andrew Shapiro to be followed by Chaplain Delita Dubose-Lee.
Hi, my name is Andrew Shapiro and I'm the Program Manager at Metropolitan Council on Housing. And I'm here to address two of the talking points we've heard tonight. We have rent stabilization because we are in a housing emergency. The free market can't work because of our vacancy rate. The system guarantees a profit. Landlords have exploited the system to the point where they were getting returns on major capital improvements that were on average of 20% according to New York State, according to DHCR's reckonings. But due to the great changes in the law, they are now predicted to get 6% back and will often get 1.5 times their initial investment. The MCIs now are done over 12 years and last for 30 years. That's 1 point times longer than what they pay, what is calculated for tenants. That means tenants are doubling and more what they are paying in MCIs for landlords. But they are here crying poverty like toddlers because their greed is slightly limited. They are, they also talk a lot about SCRI and DRAI, which covers seniors and people with disabilities, which is key for New York City to help deal with rising rents. However, it's not magical. It only helps people who are already, already rent burdened. They are rent burdened because of your rent increases. All it does is freeze them at the rent burdens that they are already at. We also need to remember these apartments, because of your rent increases, will not be affordable for the future. Therefore, their children taking over can't afford it. Many seniors have older children living with them. The time between them, their SCRI application and their child SCRI application, the apartment raises $300. The city is no longer affordable for their children or grandchildren. Landlords have spent millions of dollars in mailers, in TV ads, in lobbies, and now they're sad that they're losing. Maybe they should have spent that money on repairing their buildings and we wouldn't have the same conversation we're having here every time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Chaplain Delita Dubose-Lee to be followed by Janet Harmon.
First, I want to take the time, first, I want to take the time to thank you all for giving me an opportunity to hear my testimony. I came here because a young man that I met, I've been knowing him for some time now, and he invited me just one day. So it was definitely meant for me to see him. I saw him on the bus yesterday, he's sitting right there. And I want to thank God for him today. So I have an opportunity and I'm gonna be quick. I really believe that rent stabilization is a necessity for low and middle-income tenants. Salaries have not been increased to meet these demands. An increase would bring hardship to my community and myself. It's really hard to maintain a quality of life when you're trying to pay these high rents. This would definitely be a burden, I mean, a real burden. But there is another concern that I have. There's a tenant in my building, he's about 70-plus years old. And I don't know his ethnicity, but it's not important. He, I believe, is either Jewish or Italian or whatever. But I know that he's a, he's a man, he's a human. And he's suffering right now because he applied for SCRI and he was denied because of his income, they said it was too high. But he was told that being that his income is too high, he can't get it, and now they're trying to make him move out of the building because they're saying that his apartment is not rent stabilized. But it is. I live in this building, I lived in that building for 37 years. I've seen tenants come and go and I'd be wondering, "Why are they leaving so fast?" Because the rent is high. But I'm truly blessed by the Lord that I've been there that long and I thank God for having a voice today to speak up for the people. More power to the people and maybe the Lord bless you all to do the right thing. Amen? God bless you all. Thank you so much. Praise the God.
I have Janet Harmon to be followed by Fenicia Herbert.
My name is Janet Harmon, I live in Washington Heights. And I love this city, I love this city so much because it is so diverse. It's the most wonderful thing about this city is that diversity and diversity also includes a great diversity of incomes. And we must keep this city affordable for all, for it to be a great city. And I see gentrification creeping everywhere, raising the rents everywhere. You know, it's changing the culture of our city, not for the better. And I just really, there have been many, many high raises by the Rent Guidelines Board through the years, especially through the Bloomberg era. And just help keep this city great, give us a rent rollback this year. And let's all work together really hard, just keep this great place diverse and affordable.
Thank you. I have Fenicia Herbert to be followed by George Magueros.
Good evening, panel, good evening, room. So I was gonna talk a little bit about my apartment and my bed, my building. But I wanted to have a little bit of conversation about the owners because I know you've noticed what they've said. They have stated that they've had to, the young woman here said she had to purchase lower, the cheapest, the cheapest items for her building. But when we get cheap items, we get cheap quality. And cheap quality does not last long. My building has had a major improvement. We've received the IEIs, the MCIs, and we, about five years ago. And we're still repairing from those renovations. There should not be renovations after a major capital improvement. So when I hear owners saying, "We're gonna get the cheapest," that won't last. You're gonna want to spend more money. And the other owner says peace and love. Peace and love doesn't pay my bills when my one-bedroom apartment is $1,800. So, yes, so, and I'm not in Manhattan, I'm actually in the Bronx. But we have, after these renovations, we have one apartment in the building that water shoots up out of the toilet, it does not go down, flooding the apartments below. You have another one who has to stuff socks in her windows so that they won't get air into the apartment. So these major improvements were not done well. I had to stay with someone and pay half their rent because they gave us less than two weeks to prepare for no kitchen and no bathroom.
Thank you. I have George Magueros to be followed by Alexandra Provo.
Thank you, board. I am a hotel tenant, my name is George Magueros. I live in Hotel Park Lincoln on the Upper West Side. I want to say that the rent, I mean, when you froze the rent for a hotel, it literally saved my life. In 2009, I lost my job, I was unemployed, then I went on extended unemployment. I finally found work. And just last year, during the summer, I was, I got sick and just when I thought everything, I was standing on my feet again, I lost my job again. And so I've been unemployed for eight months. I recently just found a job three weeks ago. Last week, I had just $300 in the bank. I haven't told anyone that. So I just want to say, yes, so, thank you for doing that. Well, I guess there's another thing, it's a whole time. And in New York Times, there was an article today about starter homes, how investors are buying starter homes. These are not investors. If you're buying something that's new, you're buying new homes, you're buying new equipment, that's investing. If you're buying something that's old, you're buying old land, you're buying old buildings, that is not investing. We should not be subsidizing rapacious landlords, absentee landlords. Your name is rent stabilization. We should be stabilizing the rent, it's not a means tested benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Alexandra Provo to be followed by Phil Marius.
Hi, thank you so much for your time and the opportunity to speak. My name is Alex, I am a librarian and a rent stabilized tenant. I live uptown where I also volunteer at a women's homeless shelter. Young women and seniors, a whole range of women come through from all stages of life. They're artists, people with master's degrees, retirees, retail workers. I see them once a month when I sleep over at the shelter, but they are without homes every day. We are in a housing crisis. Housing is truly foundational. You heard about this earlier tonight from a speaker who was formerly homeless. How are the women who come to the shelter supposed to build anything? Find jobs, keep doing the jobs they already have? How can they do anything without that foundation? They are stuck in purgatory for months and months at a time, getting on a bus to arrive at our respite site shelter at 8:00 PM and leave again the next morning at 6:00 AM. My heart breaks because this could happen to anyone, but especially those who will be most impacted by the decision you are tasked with as a board. Housing should not be about profit. We need a rent freeze because housing and homelessness are inextricable. My small monthly act of volunteering is a Band-Aid. You, on the other hand, can help people across the entire city stay in their homes. Please, freeze the rent.
Thank you. I have Phil Marius to be followed by Diane Shapiro.
Good evening, I'm Phil Marius, I'm the community liaison in Assembly Member Richard Gottfried's office. He regrets that he's not able to be here tonight, he's stuck in Albany as the legislative session comes to an end. The assembly member represents the 75th Assembly District that includes Chelsea, Hell's Kitchen, Clinton, Midtown, and part of the Upper West Side and Royway Hills. And many of his constituents are tenants, running with social security as their sole income. And it is those constituents and others struggling to keep their apartments or who are already homeless that he wishes to submit this following testimony in support of a rent freeze. Several years ago, the Guidelines Board got well-earned praise for its historic vote to freeze one-year lease renewal increases for 2015 and 2016. It is unfortunate, however, that this year it has proposed to increase rents. And we believe that any increase would continue the longstanding policy of excessively favoring landlords while adding to the burden that long-time and low-income tenants are facing. A further housing of the US means that residents pay more than 30% of their income in rent. One more, the average rent stabilized tenant is currently paying 36% of income for rent. And 32.4% of rental households pay over 50% of their income in rent. And these facts can also be found in the report of the Rent Guidelines Board, the Income and Affordability Study. And given these numbers, even with a rent freeze, rent-regulated tenants will continue to struggle to make rent and fend off eviction. rent-regulated tenants will continue to struggle to make rent and fend off eviction. And another point that he would like to point out is that, um, even in the Income and Expense Study of the Rent Guidelines Board, landlords have earned an operating income of three thousand and twelve, one hundred and seventy-six dollars as of 2018. So it is for those reasons and other reasons you have heard and will continue to hear that the assembly member encourages that the Rent Guidelines Board votes for a rent freeze.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Diane Shapiro to be followed by Sarah McDaniel Dyer. Diane Shapiro? I have, uh, Sarah McDaniel Dyer to be followed by Sheila Zukowski.
Hello. Um, so I'm here because the reason that I can still afford to live in my neighborhood is because I've lived there for twelve years as a rent-stabilized tenant. If I were looking for a new apartment in my neighborhood right now, I couldn't afford it. I live in Inwood. Um, for most of my adult life, I've had three jobs to make ends meet. I have an advanced degree. I have a master's degree, and I still have three jobs most of the time. When I was a kid, my family owned a small building in Queens, but we still worked because owning a building isn't a job. I pay over twenty thousand a year in rent. And that's just my apartment. My landlord owns thirty-three buildings just in Washington Heights. He doesn't need more money. Last year, he raised our rent twice for two MCIs for our roof and a boiler. My roof now leaks, and we haven't had consistent heat or hot water since he put that boiler in. So what am I paying more money for? What are the old people in my building paying more money for? Every friend I have who's had a child has left this city within two years, mostly because of the cost of housing. We have to decide if this is a city for families and working-class people or if this is a city for finance bros and rent laws. I suggest that if the landlords here that are claiming financial hardship, if you don't raise the rent, do what every other New Yorker does when they need money. Get another job.
Thank you. I have Sheila Zukowski to be followed by Lisa Riest.
Okay, the first thing I'd like to do, um, is thank everybody here in the audience, uh, the tenant advocates who have done an amazing job in finally moving the rent laws in the right direction, uh, in the direction of tenants. Hasn't been easy fighting against multi-million, billion-dollar real estate industry people, but you did it, and it's just the beginning, I hope. Uh, I personally am one of those dinosaurs known as rent-controlled tenants. Even though rent-controlled tenants are pictured in the popular imagination as having eight-room, three-bath apartments and paying a hundred ninety-eight dollars, nothing could be farther from the truth. To be rent-controlled, you have to have lived in your apartment since 1971. That's more than forty-eight years ago. And the law that governs rent control allowed... Pestants. Landlords to raise rents seven and a half percent every single year. Seven and a half percent increases over forty-eight years. Can you imagine what happened to my rent? I've spent a lot of time figuring it out, and I hope it's correct. But I calculated it's an increase of one thousand two hundred fifty percent. So I'm very glad that the new rent laws, um, have arrived. And, uh, the increases will be more in line from now on with RGB increases for the rent stabilized tenants. Um, but I already pay at least half my income in rent, and I have a lot of trouble paying my bills. Um, so, this means that this panel... This panel is very important to me. I need some relief after forty-eight years of monster increases.
Thank you. I have Lisa Riest to be followed by Maria Peña.
Hi.
Hello.
Uh, my name is Lisa Riest, and I'm here with NIMIC. Uh, I live in a stabilized apartment at Ninety-two Pioneer Street Avenue in Washington Heights. And my landlord is High Castle Realty, owned by Newcastle Realty, who you might have seen in the New York Times recently. They're being investigated for scam renovations, uh, by the AG. I have lived there since 2012 and have been in Washington Heights for twelve years. We cannot survive further rent increases. In 2016, my building was sold, and our life changed. At our new next lease renewal, like everyone else in my building, our new landlord yanked our preferential rent, thus giving us a five-hundred-and-fifty-dollar-a-month increase in a zero, like, rent-free year. Uh, due to recent extreme increases in northern Manhattan due to Inwood's rezoning, we couldn't find anywhere to move suddenly, so we stayed. My, uh... We have limited options as my husband, who works full-time and as a freelancer, now supports us as I became disabled, um, by chronic illness six years ago. And I do not get SSDI payments, uh, because those are only awarded to thirty-seven percent of initial applicants, and I could not afford an attorney. Rent now takes up eighty percent of our income. And combined with student loan debt, we barely scrape by. Our building, once pristine, is now full of constant construction as apartments are gutted, extensively renovated, and deregulated. Building entrances, once secure, are now propped open daily for workers, leading to male theft and a haze of flies in our lobby. Ever-present workers who are not given safe masks or safety equipment trail lead dust and construction debris through our elevator and halls, the floors of which are now caked with grime as they are rarely cleaned.
Thank you.
Throughout November, definitely loud industrial machines were used for asbestos removal on our roof. The vibrations damaged our apartment two floors down, leaving deep and bulging cracks across our ceilings and walls and possible structural damage.
Thank you.
Water damage followed, which was not repaired until eight months later after rotting ceiling plaster fell on our bed and they were issued a housing violation. Our landlord now uses off-site thermostats controlled at their offices to keep our apartments unheated and our water freezing despite frequent housing violations. They do not respond to letters, emails, or calls. I know that we are not alone, and I have heard horror stories and much worse from my neighbors in my building and my neighborhood. We love our home, and we're fighting for it, but we need rent reductions, not increases.
Thank you. I have Maria Peña to be followed by Emmanuel Antigua.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Quiero dar las gracias al panel de RGB por estar aquí esta noche escuchando los testimonios que nosotros la gente de bajos ingreso tenemos.
Good evening to all of you. I'd like to thank the RGB panel tonight for listening to all of us, including the people and their testimony, especially those who are low-income.
Estoy aquí representando al N M E C del Washington Heights. Y quiero hablar acerca de las reparaciones y del dinero que los landlords agarran en nombre de reparar nuestros edificios.
I am here today on behalf of N M E C from Washington Heights, and I'd like to speak about the repairs and, of course, the money that landlords swindle from people in name of all of the repairs that they're supposedly doing in the buildings.
Ellos siempre reciben dinero para supuestamente reparar nuestros apartamentos y hacer las reparaciones en las áreas públicas, pero yo no las veo.
They apparently receive money so that all types of repairs can be carried out in public spaces in our buildings, but I never get to see any of these repairs done.
Acerca de las averías de los edificios y los defectos que tienen nuestros vecindarios, mis vecinos y yo no hemos visto, no hemos conseguido ninguna de las reparaciones que ellos reportan. El año pasado, los landlords de mi edificio consiguieron diez punto ocho por ciento. Y yo creo estoy pendiente de lo que ellos reportan a la ciudad. Ellos menten.
According to, uh... According to what they've stated, uh, the damage and defects that have been repaired have been... Have not been seen by any of us, including my neighbors. Last year, they reported a ten-point-eight percent, uh, increase in all of the repairs that were done. And, of course, we never saw any of these done.
Pero ellos nunca invierten el dinero que la ciudad le da supuestamente para reparar los edificios y nuestros apartamentos.
But they don't ever invest any of the money that the city supposedly gives them so that these repairs can be carried out in our buildings.
Yo tuve que mentir el año pasado a mi administrador management porque él reportó que él reparó mi apartamento completo. Yo llamé a la ciudad y dije que no era cierto y que necesitaba que HPD fuera a impresionar mi apartamento.
Last year, I called out the building manager for my building because he stated to the city that he had fully repaired my apartment, which was not done. So, of course, I called HPD and reported this to the city.
Y gracias a Dios llegaron los inspectores y comprobaron que la que decía la verdad era yo. Muchas gracias.
And thank God that the, uh... Of course, the supervisors showed up at my apartment, and they witnessed for a fact that these repairs had not been carried out. And they realized that I was not the one that was lying. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, I have Emmanuel Antigua. But, um, we're gonna take a ten-minute break, um, and then we'll come back. Just so you have a sense of where we're at, we have, um, uh, almost twenty more speakers. And the first speaker after the break will be Liz Powers.
Vamos a tomar una pausa de diez minutos, pero para que, por favor, tengan una idea, todavía nos quedan casi unos veinte discursantes por presentarse.
Yeah, just to be clear, the, uh, Mark, who's the stenographer, has been typing away for three hours, and his fingers just need a break.
Para que, por favor, sepan, el taquigrafo lleva más de tres horas tomando todos los apuntes, así que es justo que él tome una pausa. Gracias.
Uh, Emmanuel Antigua, uh... We'll speak before we take this break. Emmanuel? Welcome.
Hi. My name is Emmanuel, and I work as part of an administrative team in a research department at the Icahn School of Medicine in Mount Sinai. Um, I am a rent-stabilized tenant in Inwood in a building owned by Barbary Rose Management. Barbary Rose purchased my building in 2016 and has paid millions more buying building after building in my neighborhood. In the past eight months, my rent was increased over one hundred dollars for a boiler that did not keep me and my neighbors warm this winter and a roof that leaks. As a tenants' rights activist, I have heard many similar testimonies from my fellow tenants, many even more unjust and more heartbreaking. These landlords are clearly not hurting. They are doing everything they can to turn maximum profits using strategies based on pure greed. So I beg and plead with you to either establish a rent rollback or at most, a rent freeze, please.
Thank you. All right, we'll recess for ten minutes, and we will return about 9:13. Thank you. Um, sorry for the delay in reconvening. Uh, I think we're ready to go. So I have Liz Peters, who's here on behalf of Councilmember Keith Powers. And then, um, Ms. Peters will be followed by Thomasine Holloway.
Thank you. As you mentioned, I will be reading testimony from Councilmember Keith Powers, the council member for the Fourth District of Manhattan. As City Councilmember for the Fourth District of Manhattan, I represent tens of thousands of rent-stabilized tenants. The district I represent begins at Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper Village on Fourteenth Street near the East River, extends as far west as Columbus Circle and as far north as Ninety-Eighth Street and Fifth Avenue. The neighborhoods I serve contain vastly different populations, but they all have a great need for more affordable housing. I respectfully requesting the Rent Guidelines Board vote for a zero percent increase on one- and two-year leases. As everyone who has read doubtlessly knows, the state legislature achieved a historic milestone in its passage of new legal protections for rent-stabilized tenants. Albany has done its job for the first time in decades, but it will be all for naught if the Rent Guidelines Board does not follow suit to protect tenants. Though housing law has taken bold steps toward further protecting rent stabilization, tenants are still paying ever-escalating rents while landlords continue to reap profits. Recommending a two-and-a-quarter percent increase, as indicated in the board's preliminary vote for one-year leases, could undo much of the good work completed this year to strengthen affordability in New York. The recent report notes that there was a net gain of forty... Over forty-three hundred units citywide. While this is indisputable, it does not quite lay out the full picture for what has happened to rent-stabilized units in Manhattan. Unlike the rest of the boroughs, Manhattan suffered a net loss of hundreds of rent-stabilized units last year. In fact, the majority of all the units lost to regulation last year throughout the entire city were in Manhattan. Additionally, the average rent is a staggering of forty-five hundred dollars a month. It is critical that the board takes the scarcity and distribution of rent stabilization units into account when considering raising rents even further. Instead of yet another year of increasing profit for rent-stabilized tenants, landlords still requested five-and-a-quarter percent for one-year lease and six-and-a-quarter percent for two-year lease renewal. In my home neighborhood of Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper Village, we know firsthand about the importance of rent stabilization. Our community would not be possible without the regulation and protection of rents. Any rent increase recommended by the Rent Guidelines Board would be compounded by long-term payments added on to rent for major capital improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would... And one last thing, I'd be remiss without mentioning the individuals and families who are most impacted by housing policy. In the last decade, our city's homeless population has nearly doubled. Uh, the city is in... The city is placing numerous resources into combating forces that are accelerating homelessness, and I implore you not to add to those causes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Thomasine Holloway to be followed by Felicia Majet. Thomasine Holloway? Come on up. I have Felicia Majet to be followed by Mary Majet.
Hello. Happy to be in front of you. Um, I live at 601 West 151. Will Quest is the management. I had a fire in March of 2016, and I was out of my house for eight months. I came home to a beautiful painting, but it wasn't done. I stayed at the house because I didn't have anywhere to go. The walls were falling apart, the floors was opening up. There were... They put electricity on the outside of the wall instead of inside the wall. Um, we had roaches, rats, all kinds of things coming out, and he did nothing. I took him to court, he said he wasn't gonna fix the apartment. He was trying to really get me, force me out. But how could you force people out when they have nowhere to go? I had to stay in that. My daughter, my fiance, we all asthmatics. Now our lungs is messed up. My blood pressure is like two hundred over a hundred and eighty because I cannot get my apartment together. My diabetes is on the chain. I can't control it. I can't do anything. And I think it's unfair. I paid my rent every month. I was never late. I'm a good tenant. I don't bring drama to the building. I, for the life of me, I could not understand why this man did not wanna give me a proper apartment. I think it's unfair that landlords can do whatever they want. You take him to court, all you do is get adjourned, adjourned. And in the meantime, your family is living in unhealthy departments. And then after all of this is over, he still want me to pay her for the whole time that the apartment's been inhabitable. So for three years, I've been paying this man my rent, and I haven't been able to live in an inhabitable apartment. And I really wish that y'all would do something about these landlords because they're getting away with murder. And I appreciate you hearing what I have to say. Please don't raise the rent. I really can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Mary Majet to be followed by Budia Williams.
Good evening. My name is Mary Majet. I'm here on behalf of the younger generation. I'm here on behalf of the younger generation. I have a question. If a murderer, a child abuser, a sex offender go to jail for committing crimes, why is it that these landlords get away with all this heinous crime that goes on? I worked, I worked at an SRO for 16 months. And in 16 months, 10 people died. You know why they died? Because the landlord, the only volunteer as a member of the council, told the tenants, "Give it here air conditions. We put a vent up here so you guys can have air condition." So you don't have to have it. Don't you know, eight people died due to heat stroke alone. One tenant died, he was butchered. Somebody came to his apartment and butchered him. And guess what? We have 24-hour surveillance on staff. But guess what? We have no locks and we overwork. So who's protecting us in SRO? That's where I work at. Can you hear my mother's story? I came home to this. She didn't tell you that I can look from one room to the next, through a crack in my wall? That's not cool. My neighbor fell out her window because she leaned on it and it was not secure and she died. For what? Because she paid her rent? This is how you repay us? My family has been in my apartment since 1949. I lived in my apartment. My great-great aunt lived there. When we moved into her apartment, you know what they told us? Well, good for you, but you're gonna pay market value rent. My mother, we've been living here since 1994, never had a rent problem, but yet you gonna fix my apartment? You didn't even have the common courtesy to come to me and say, "I'm sorry for what you've been through." You looked at me like I wasn't worth nothing to you. After all the years I've paid my rent, been a good tenant to you, this is what we get? Now I know y'all have y'all plates and y'all go through the things y'all go through, but y'all would not wanna live where we live at. Y'all would not wanna endure where we endure. And I think that it's unfair that y'all get a taste, landlords included, to see where we live at, to see what we go through. But now gentificationists came into our neighborhood and all these condos come in. Y'all wanna kick us out. But where was y'all at when job wars was going on, when babies was getting killed, when I had to sacrifice from going to an elite college to go to a community college because I couldn't afford it? It's either my rent, my healthcare, or college. Who do I pick? I thank you guys. I appreciate it. I hope that you hear us. Have a great night.
Thank you. Budhia Munis to be followed by Regina McCray. Ms. Munis? Ms. Munis? I have Regina McCray to be followed by Alice Sutter.
Okay, so I'll speak very, very quickly. I live in Washington Heights and when we got out, we had never heard of rent stabilization, rent control. We didn't know anything about the rent guidelines. And we would just happen to get a two-bedroom apartment in Washington Heights for 800 and change a month. Fast forward 15 years later and I'm working alongside Mimic, who has decided to help us with our case, which is what I'll get to next. And they suggest that we look at our rent history. And I find out that we've been overpaying for the last 15 years. My landlord owes me about $90,000 plus interest because the previous tenant had lived there 40 years. He was entitled to a $100, $103 rent increase. And so my rent should have been 471 instead of 896. And with the new law, we can only sue back the last six years. So while we can look back 15 years and see what the rent should be, because it should be 671 instead of 1,300, that is that now, but I'll never be able to get that other 60,000 I've been cheated out of. So I don't think my landlord is entitled to a rent increase. Krishna and his family owned my building. They were doing, uh, work without work permits. They would move kitchens into hallways and turn one-bedroom apartments into three-bedroom apartments and then charge $2,000 or $3,000 a month rent. They have kicked everybody out and there's only 11 rent stabilized tenants left in a rent stabilized building. So when Shamco came in, I'm gonna make this very quick, they decided they were going to pay $11 million for a building that was valued at $2 million. So they decided they would pick up where the other landlords had left off and destroy our apartments. She was just talking about being sick. As you can see, I'm wearing a heart monitor. I've had leads in my head from seizures. I've been getting it out of the hospital for the last eight months. I can't really get very quick. Those leads, I have pictures of the talking of blood. I have a paper trail a mile long, two thousand seven hundred.
Okay, Ms. McCray.
Get rid of all of the rent stabilized tenants. I didn't get it to us for four months. For four months.
Thank you.
It's been our apartment. Everything was subjected to deadly levels of mold.
Ms. McCray.
Blowing out of our ceilings. These landlords don't deserve. They should be in jail. Like she said, this is criminal.
Thank you.
So first they cheat us and then they try to sell us.
Thank you.
No rent increases.
Thank you. Alice Sutter to be followed by Alvin Alexis. Al, Alice Sutter. I have Alvin Alexis to be followed by Gressel Thompson. Alvin Alexis? I have Gressel Thompson, oh. Gressel. Gressel Thompson to be followed by Nadira Ahmed.
Good evening. I know it's a long evening, but I'll try and be short. I am a resident of the formerly Riverside Park Towers. It's now B.S.R.E.P. 3333 Broadway LLC. After the building came out of the natural lava program, which everyone was, the 30% of their income, I fell into what's considered a LAP lease, landlord assistance program. So, um, it's not officially a subsidized apartment, but it, my rent is increased based on the decisions that you make. I've lived in a community for 37 years, raised three children and was, uh, part of the fabric of that community. When it was decimate, when it was drug written, I stayed, I was a working class woman. I've worked ever since I was able to get, uh, working papers into maybe three years ago, 29 of those years with the federal government. When I was forced to retire disability due to injuries and medical condition, which causes me pain, um, chronic pain. My pension has been reduced by 60%. I do not qualify with the requirements for SSDI. Even if I did, I couldn't double dip with my pension on SSDI. After working for the federal government for so long, I was now receiving 60% of my rent, I mean of my pension, which entitles me to pay 80% of that to my landlord. It is an extreme hardship. And although I know you've heard various stories of my existence at MIMIC, I do hope that you will consider in your hearts that this is a trend in this city. People do not qualify for this program, straight, dray, SSDI. And it is a shame that I have to tell my kids that I may have to live with them because a woman has worked all of her entire life cannot pay her rent on her pension that she's paid into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nadira Ahmed to be followed by Richard Berger.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
I'm here, you know, to talk with you and explain why I oppose the rent increase. My name is Nadira Ahmed and I'm a member of WE Act for Environmental Justice and I'm a member of the Tenants Association at 2186 Fifth Avenue in Lenox Terrace for 27 years. Now some of the points, at my length of 27 years, they haven't made any, you know, improvement. And this year alone, I had the first, I had, I, I had to fight cancer and needed to get sanitation, uh, I have sanitation, but a sanitarized refrigerator and stove. My refrigerator and stoves have been left broken. First of all, I've never received a new refrigerator. When I moved in 27 years ago, I got a refurbish and I was fighting for a new refrigerator, but they never gave it to me. They, they keep giving me refurbished refrigerators. And one of the main things that's important when you have cancer, you don't need a used refurbished refrigerator from another person's illness. You know, what they do is that when you die, they take in refurbished refrigerator and bring it into a new, um, tenant's apartment. And bleach can only do for so much, you know? And because we're dealing with bacteria and every part of cancer, everybody just have different kind of cancer and have to take different kind of medicine. And they know that. And they know that my refrigerator is broke. I have an old stove, it's broke, um, broken towel that I, you know, that I can cut my feet on. I told them I have, um, went to insurance. I said, "If I cut my feet, I'm gonna sue you," you know? And so my point is that when I made a request for new equipment, I was denied, which left me to manage myself. I asked them, "Could I go to Home Depot and buy my own towel?" They, they consent someone in. They said, "No." Um, I asked for a new refrigerator, "Can we buy it ourselves?" They said, "No." But my apartment is, is old, 27 years, it's dilapidated with, uh, all, you know, it's dilapidated.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
There should be a freeze until these, you know, these demands are made or y'all should give us a four-year lease instead of a two to one to zero on the street.
Thank you. I have Richard Berger and then Tavol Alwade.
Okay. Uh, my name is Richard. As a long-term rent stabilized tenant, I just wanted to thank you all for your preliminary vote on rent freeze. And, um, I also, I, I mean, right now, I'm on a fixed income. I pay over 60% of my income, monthly income on rent. So I really appreciate your vote next week on the rent freeze. I, I also believe that there should be a rent rollback. I wanted to bring everybody's attention to the fact that in 2008, no, 2009, 2010, the rent board at that time decided that the rent increase is way high enough. So apartment rules for that year got hit with a 40, I think it was $40 surcharge on a one-year lease and $80 on a two-year lease. Okay? That money that we paid in is still, we're still paying it today and the increases on top, it's like paying an extra $150, $180 a month. So that should be considered when you're voting, you know, for the rent freeze. But it also is, adds some weight to voting for a rent rollback. And so that, that's, you know, and I hope, you know, I appreciate you listening to everybody here. I mean, there's been some really incredible stories and, you know, it's a shame, but, um, I mean, I hope also that you can, um, enforce the laws that we have just gotten over the last month, you know, for the, you know, the new rent laws. And it, I just wanna say that they're worth nothing if they're not enforced.
Thank you. I have Tavol Alwade to be followed by Elizabeth Filisaya.
Right, um, I thank you very much, uh, uh.
Okay, talk to the board.
I thank the board panel for allowing me to speak here today and thank you for my efforts. My name is Tavol Alwade. Uh, I live in the Lower East Side of Manhattan and in the same apartment for nearly 18 years. Is in the same apartment where my two children were born and, uh, uh, the cohabitant, Tate, that's my, my wife, my two children. My apartment was sold, uh, the building was sold about, uh, three years ago. And the new landlord subsequently started attacking my family, tried to force money to move, we rejected it. And subsequently resulted to all types of harassment, uh, including opening our meals, um, uh, tempering with, uh, we didn't have, um, gas, cooking gas for some time, uh, prolonging, um, construction work for a long time and, uh, rejecting rent checks that I've written to them. In essence, questioning my, the legality of my marriage with my wife or asking me to go and produce my certificate when the landlord already knew that we were a family unit and that in the previous, uh, previously expired leases. Now, this is not the America that I know. There's a lot that can be said about the society in how we treat the vulnerable. Culturally, I'm supposed to be responsible for my children. I have done everything that I'm supposed to do as, as a father. My children are only one students. We admit that, um, the landlord did not see us as a family. He wired our apartment at no cost.
Thank you.
I went to the DNR to help, for help after that. And we are dealing with this all alone. Despite warning, two orders from the DNR, another order from the health department because the landlord kept embodying my children with lead dust.
Thank you.
It was supposed, there was order mandated to clean, they let dust off and did not clean what we were supposed to. Till today, we're still filing all forms of, um, elongated, um, proceedings. I have tons and tons of people like this in my apartment. I apologize. But I've had to deal with this. I'm not owing rent. I'm doing what I'm supposed to do. So, um, I have a remote view of things because I also have residency license.
Thank you.
Because I know that a lot of people, uh, it's changing the makeup. We are one of those safeguards that the American society puts in place. You understand me? To help, uh, make sure, you understand me, that, uh, there's all kinds of creed, colors, of people of different, uh, income levels.
Mr. Alwade, could you wrap it up?
I, I, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, the New York that I know, this is not the New York that I know. This is a welcoming society. This is a beautiful place. Let's keep New York beautiful.
Thank you.
Keep the rent rateers, uh, on a smash sheet.
Thank you. I have Elizabeth Filisaya and then Adriana Barrett.
Hi, uh, my name's Elizabeth Filisaya and I've been a rent stabilized tenant at Amsterdam Avenue, 100th and 8th Street for 27 years. I'm here on behalf of the Association. There are, it's two buildings. There are 59 apartments in total. Eleven of those apartments have been held empty, some of them for years, seven, eight years, in preparation for an eventual sale. The building did finally sell in Nevada. Work was started on two, three of those apartments. It all stopped when it became clear that the rent reforms were gonna be thrown in our wake. Our landlord, he doesn't know us. He doesn't know the building. In some ways, he's not a landlord. He is a speculator. That aside, my question or my point is that if landlords can afford to hold apartments empty, which should be affordable units that people are living in, how can it even be a question that they might deserve a rent increase? Because those apartments, you know, sit empty for years. And so we're asking for a zero increase to make it very clear that housing is not a monopoly game, that it's a human right and that, um... a monopoly, but it's a human right and that, um... Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Adriana Barrett to be followed by Nadia Ramirez. Adriana?
Um, hi. My name is Adriana and I'm 12 and I personally also live in housing, but, um, actually this increase, if it happens, will not affect me though. But even though it does not affect me, it would, I just see each of these people here having to fight for the, for, you know, not having this increase in rent. It's kind of, it hurts my heart to see that people are living in horrible conditions and having increases in rent that honestly, some of the, like, like, places that I've heard people describe is like, I don't believe humans should be able, like, not able, but like, shouldn't live in these conditions.
Thank you. I have Nadia Ramirez to be followed by Betty Jones.
Good morning, Sam. Thank you for guys giving us the opportunity to speak to you. And, uh, so kudos to you guys because we've been here for so long and all these stories are so sad and could be so exhausting, telling it, but also hearing it and feeling responsible for all these people that are speaking. Um, I wanna say, this is my first time in the council of all these meetings, and I just got involved. I've been in the local, only, uh, voting rights in Washington Heights and I'm a very, very extreme person because people are, they know that. And, um, because of MIMIC, uh, this organization, they have allowed us to, allowed me and Lisa Tensin, our building, to understand our rights and things that we should be accustomed to. And we really didn't understand that. Maybe because of language barrier, maybe because of all of it, didn't understand. We realized that the living conditions that we're in are not proper, not standard. It's really sad and especially now that we've got new landlords and they're pushing people out. It's really, really devastating to see how people are just trying to take advantage. But that's not the point that I really want to speak because all its stories you've heard. What I am kind, I want to mention is that I learned that rent stabilized apartments are here to stay. So regardless of what happens, the law has said that these have to stay. The, the, the game, the rules of the game have changed. And I also think that the rules of this scenario has also, should also be changed. By the way, I see it, and I want to present that, is that it should be a win-win situation. I'm gonna go with the mentality that's only 10% of the landlords are really as bad as people are saying, and only 10% of the tenants are as bad as people are reporting. But I think that we have to find a middle ground. And I think that the middle ground, if it could be a win-win situation, I think the tenants should be taken out of the equation. And I think that, and this is why I say that we should have a 0% increase, because the people, the way I think this could really advance is landlords that have rent stabilized, rent stabilized apartments in their, in their program, in their, in their portfolios, they should be rewarded if they have maintained rent stabilized apartments up to par and they're in line with the leases. And the way that this could be done is by bringing in the regulators and maybe rewarding them with better interest rates, lower mortgage rates. So we may make any laws and petitions to you guys. So please consider a win-win situation and help us on so that we can be paid for. Thank you.
I have Betty Jones to be followed by A. Solanke. Betty Jones? I have A. Solanke to be followed by Patricia Bowles-Sins. A. Solanke? Patricia Bowles-Sins?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening.
Um, this is frightening. I am 59 years old. I do live in a rent stabilized and my son lived there also. And it's gotten to the fact that we cannot be separated because we cannot afford the rent alone. We need each other's help and it should not be that way. From all I can hear tonight, such a big crime have been being committed by these landlords. We are right now under a new management, which is Schindler's Management, that is getting money from HPD to do a big renovation in our building and they said that our rent will go up. The problem is, if there, if there are repairs that needed to be done, it should have been done without our rent going up that much. If you know about Schindler's Management, you should know that they are the leading management that doesn't, that do not do repairs. They only went to their family and they take the tenant's money. And it shouldn't be like this. I am so tired and so angry that these laws, we, tenants has been fighting this before I was born, right? For tenants to have the right place to live. You shouldn't have to be poor whereas you have so many rats and roaches. And for you to live comfortably, your rent has to be high. That should be for everybody who is a human being, regardless of how much money you make. I just don't understand that we have come so far in a society where people don't care about people? Who are we? What are we? You cannot go home at night and think, "'Cause I live here, oh, this is comfortable,' while people outside in the street are being homeless. I see people my age that are homeless where I live in. So now I live in a prime real estate area on Lenox and 115th, and they're trying to take that away from me? No.
Thank you.
Please make the right decision. Thank you.
So, um, I reached the end of my list and I'm gonna quickly run through the names of people who did respond. Alvin Alexis, Allison, Budia Munoz, Thomasina Holloway, Diane Shapiro, Jose Torres, Dawn James, Rana Muzherbin, Ralph Ashweiser, Delcinea Glover, Terry Brooks, Barbara Washington, Karen Braga, A. Solanke, Betty Jones. We've reached the end of it. Um, you all get bonus points for standing at the very end. Um, and do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, we are adjourned. David Felicea, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.